... meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell?
Here.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker. Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Any changes, additions? Hearing seeing none. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now please stand for the invocation. We have Majid Steve Clapper with us this evening.
While we're grateful for the blessings that we receive every day, perhaps this week of Thanksgiving, we're particularly cognizant and thankful for all that we have. Dear God, for the laughter of our children, for the air we breathe, for the abundance of food and the roofs over our heads, for the clothes on our back, for our health and our wealth of blessings, for the opportunity to celebrate with family and friends, for the freedom to pray these words without fear in any language, in any faith, in this great country, we thank you, God above, for giving us all of these. Baruch atah Adonai Eloheinu Melech Olam. All praise and blessings to the Holy One of Being, shehechianu, who has kept us alive, v'kiyamanu, who has sustained us, v'igiyanu laz man ha'zer, and who has brought us to this moment in health and hope. And together we say, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Commons section of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on the agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Dan Mihoescu. I live here in Berkeley on Harvard Road, and I'm the chairman of the Berkeley Beautification Advisory Committee, and we wanted to inform the public of a contest that we are having. Obviously, the weather's been a little warmer than usual, but the holidays are fast approaching. So we're having a holiday spirit contest. The email that any nomination should be sent to is BerkeleyBAC@gmail.com. So basically, anybody that has a neighbor, friend, home that they find appealing or festive, they can send the information to that email address as well. We'll be accepting any business that shows a good holiday spirit as well. We will be making a decision, excuse me, the nomination should be sent by November 30th, and then we will be making a decision on December 5th to then announce to the public. Representing the council or the committee here as well is my wife, Vanilla Mihoescu, who is the secretary, and today's her birthday, happy birthday. And also, we have Douglas Deeds, who is a member of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else?
Good evening. I would like to say a few words about a promotion we're making today in the department. Officer Andrew Hadfield is being promoted to sergeant today. Andrew started his career in our department 12 years ago as a dispatcher. In 2003, he became our Animal Control Officer while he helped forge a collaborative, shared service agreement with the City of Royal Oak, where we split animal control services. Also that year, he went to the fire academy and became a volunteer firefighter for our city. In 2004, he went to the police academy and became a public safety officer. He has served admirably for eight years as an officer. His work ethic and enthusiasm led to three statewide Mother Against Drunk Driver awards. Last year, he spent nine months in the detective bureau, quickly developing skills in that area of our endeavor. He's a bicycle patrol officer. Andrew also has been very active in community service, well beyond routine duties. He and Officer Corey Miller initiated the Behind the Badge Educational Program that you all see on Cablevision. He runs the Lids for Kids program, along with Officer Dennis Geary. Along with Officer Geary and Officer David Arnie, he gives fire safety and stranger danger presentations in schools, including Rogers, Angel, Patton Gill, and La Salette. Currently, he's working on a program for special need children at Anderson Middle School. Clearly, Andrew is an intelligent, compassionate, well-rounded person, and a versatile, extraordinarily capable officer, well deserving of promotion. Succession in the supervisory ranks in a public safety department is a key component in ensuring a high-quality department for the future. Andrew's promotion is a huge step in that process. Andrew?
Thank you, Chief.
I'm very proud to make this promotion. A lot of people know Andrew, but they don't perhaps know him in the work capacity I know him, and I can tell you, he is going to do extraordinarily well.
I just wanted to say thank you to council.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to see that we're promoting Andrew Hadfield to the rank of sergeant. I've known the family for a long time. I coached his brother in football, both at the Little League and at the high school level, and I am happy to report that Andrew is faster than his brother. His brother also recently received a promotion at a police department in Pennsylvania. These are Berkeley boys, born and bred. They're a credit to our community. Andrew is a young officer, now a sergeant, as all the officers at UC present, that I know I can count on. I'm pleased to work with every one of them, and I wish Andrew all success, and I'm sure he will do a very good job for us. Thank you very much.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the council. Dale Snyder, of course, city manager, Mr. Sabuda, Matt Sherrill, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to serve you, to serve the residents. I've tried to get in touch to at least know everybody here, and of course, as everybody would say, if you need anything, let us know. I would like to thank, of course, my family, my dad, my stepmom, and my wife, Lindsay, for coming in. The children back here would be my son, Parker, Charlie, and Alyssa, and then, of course, my extended family, the police officers. For the older officers who trained me, I thank them for their support. The new officers who came in and look up to me. Hopefully, I can do a good job for everybody here. So, thank you very much.
I think it is a special tribute to Andrew, the esteem that he's been held by his colleagues, so many of them here, from the, I think, more than half of them, maybe three-quarters of our Public Safety Department are here, to honor this moment, and we are very proud that he is a public safety officer in our city and a sergeant, and, as the chief said, part of the movement to develop a succession plan for the years ahead. These young men and women are the future of our town, keeping us all safe. We thank you, Sergeant.
Thanks very much.
And now, is there anybody else to come before the council? Very good. So then, the next order of business is the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes. Item number one, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on October 15th, 2012. Item number two, approval of the warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1260. Item number three, presentation, presentation by Nina Ignazik on the Woodward Five Sustainability Partnership.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions and Presentations, matter of any recognition or presentations from the consent agenda.
Ms. DeSessa?
There is one item, Your Honor, under Presentations, that will be given by Ms. Nina Ignazik from the, she's working on a grant for the Woodward Five Sustainability Partnership. If you don't mind, Nina, would just please come before the council and give us an update as to where we are with this grant? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSessa, and good evening, mayor and members of council. My name is Nina Ignazik, and I'm with Oakland County Planning and Economic Development Services, and we've been working with the Woodward Five for about a year now on this project, and I wanted to come and give you an update to let you know where we are. So when we talk about sustainability, what we're talking about is this idea of the triple bottom line, and that's where we try to balance our economic, community, and social and environmental outcomes in the community. We started up in this project in 2011. Oakland County applied for and was awarded a grant from the State of Michigan to develop a sustainability partnership with a group of local communities. We issued a request for proposals to all of our 61 local units in Oakland County and selected the joint application from the Woodward Five. One of the great things about your application was that you are already working together on a collaborative effort, so that was really good. All of the city councils passed resolutions of support, and we began in early 2012. We convened a Sustainability Advisory Board, which consists of multiple representatives across the communities in the nonprofit business, environmental, and government sectors, and we set about gathering information and data. We've held two community meetings thus far and gotten public input via community meeting and also online survey. We've been collecting data and identifying actions, and in 2013, early 2013, we hope to synthesize this information and provide a product to you, to the five cities. What we're hoping to provide is a common framework that will get the five cities thinking along the same lines in terms of overall goals and also objectives and things that you're measuring yourselves by. We hope to deliver a communication tool that will enable each city to let the public know what you're doing as far as sustainability and where you plan to go. We're hoping that we can provide some guidance for action, especially collaborative action within the Woodward Five, to try to get an idea of where that partnership should go in the near future, and we'll be providing a tool for tracking and reporting your actions and your metrics going forward. The sustainability vision statement that was adopted by the advisory board is, the Woodward Five sustainability vision is empowering our communities to collaborate, to make the Woodward Five an interconnected, sustainable, diverse place to work, play, live, work, play, and learn. The three goals in this project are those of the triple bottom line, so a sustainable economy, environment, and community, and within each of those goal areas, we have five outcomes. So for example, within the sustainable economy, we have fiscal sustainability, economic prosperity, economic diversity, high-quality services and infrastructure, and economic development friendly, and so on. So just to give you kind of a little flavor of the kinds of things that we're addressing in this plan, within the goal of sustainable economy, focusing on this first one, efficient, high-quality services and infrastructure, we're defining that as city services that are delivered of a high quality, transparently and efficiently, the infrastructure is maintained in good condition, and improvements are completed. And what, one of the main thrusts of this project is that we're looking to develop, help you develop quantitative metrics that you can use individually within your cities and also collaboratively within the Woodward Five to see where you're going, where you are and where you're going with respect to these items. So for example, to measure the objective of efficient, high-quality services and infrastructure, we're looking at things like condition of roads, the percent of road miles in poor condition, cost of services per household, percent satisfied residents, if there's a resident satisfaction survey, things like that. With an environment, we've got objectives related to sustainable transportation, green infrastructure, energy conservation, air and water quality, and waste conservation. Within the green infrastructure topic, that is defined as the community having numerous connected green spaces and parks that provide recreational opportunities and ecological value to the community, and we're looking to measure that by the percent of dwelling units that were, are within a half mile of a park, tree canopy coverage, public recreation funds per capita, and areas of active park area per thousand residents. In the, in the goal area of community, we've, we have objectives relating to diversity, healthy community, education, civic engagement, and engagement with science, arts, and culture. So for example, within a diverse community, we define that as having ethnic, religious, age, and cultural diversity of residents and business owners, and welcoming and celebrating all of those areas. As far as measurements for this, we've selected to look at affordability, which we're defining as the cost of local housing as percent of the regional median income, racial diversity index, and percent of the households that are same-sex households. In the end, we hope to deliver a technical document that will document our public input process and the data that we've collected, where the sources of data were, and where you can go to continue to collect that data in the future, as well as reports that are surrounded, that are centered on these three areas, that are really graphic reports and communications tools, sorry, communication tools for the public, and then we're going to deliver a data management tool that will enable city staff and the Woodward Five collaborative to measure these items into the future and continue to support that effort. So right now, we are still working to refine the indicators. We have most of them identified, but we're still working on a few. We're working with the cities to set targets for these indicators, so we want to know, if you're at this level, do you want to go up, or down, or stay the same, and then what actions, documenting the actions that the cities are taking, both individually and collaboratively, to move forward. And we're also looking at for community group-led actions, and we are meeting with the school districts to find out what the schools are doing in the community. So that's basically the presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Nina? City manager?
Just to comment, Your Honor, I'd personally like to thank Oakland County for the amazing work that they're doing. Obviously, they're dealing with five different, totally different communities, and to get us all to think the same and to head the same direction is quite an ordeal. So Nina, you and your staff, I sincerely want to thank you, publicly thank you for all the hard work that you're doing, so.
Thank you, and you're very welcome.
Thank you.
We're very excited about the project.
Me too, me too. I know in the beginning, it's difficult when we're putting this all together, what's it going to look like?
Yeah.
And I know there's some people that, you know, they can't see it yet, but, but I think we're almost there. And one of the other things, Your Honor, that we're hoping to do is to try to get all the councils together, and I know that's going to be quite a feat, but that's something that we're, that we're working on, so that we can report and meet all together about this item. And another personal note of appreciation is, is to Councilmember Platt Onson?
Yes.
For, for her time?
Absolutely.
And all her work that she has done to help us put this document together. I sincerely appreciate this, Councilmember. You're on time, you always come to all the meetings, so thank you very much. So again, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight, and I, and I share our congratulations and gratitude to Councilmember Platt Onson for, for all your leadership and support and effort in moving this forward. Thank you. Great, great stuff here, and I had a couple of questions in terms of just more of your impressions as you pulled together the material from Berkeley and the region around things that, from the content that you see around the triple bottom line and that kind of stuff, just early indications and thoughts around things that you're, that you're most excited about looking forward in terms of the progress and things, and the things that you're most, I want to say worried about or concerned about in terms of, so most excited and most worried?
Well, I think one of the things I'm really excited about is the degree to which the communities are already committed to working together, and that a lot of what we're hearing, especially in the public forums, really focuses on not so much, you know, the idea of sharing services or merging departments and all of those things, but more on, let's act like we're this wider community of the Woodward Five, let's make sure we have all of our community information in one place, that we're really cultivating that community. You already have so many things that you're doing, I mean, you're all members of SACRA, you all have environmental advisory boards in place at this point, so I think it's really just a matter of kind of formalizing some of the things that you're doing and agreeing together where you're going and where you're measuring. As far as worried, I don't, I don't know, I'm not worried about this group. I have other worries, but maybe not this group.
Nice. Well, thank you again, I appreciate this.
Yep, thank you.
And it's nice to see the journey thus far, and we look forward to, to the, to the reports and to, to help and
Great.
Support to those things that we're all excited about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I too would like to thank you for being here, thank you for all the work you're doing to, to increase collaboration amongst the five communities, and probably just as important is to reduce competitiveness, that we can share our strengths and, and maybe they're not always necessarily in competition
Mm-hmm.
With one another to produce a whole that's more integral and serves the community better. I too would like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Platt Onson, for her dedication to this and being so enthusiastic and dedicating so much time, because this is time-intensive to produce work like this, and so we're very thankful that you have represented our council well on this committee and contributed your knowledge and experience to produce a document like this. So we thank you, and we thank you for being here.
Yep, thank you, you're welcome.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-4412, Presentation in Matter of Approving a Resolution Accepting the Audit of 2011/12 Annual Financial Report.
Is there a motion to approve R-4412?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekell. Ms. DeSessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. You know, under this item, I want to make sure that we give enough time to our, our auditors in order to give a presentation. Is there something that you're going to need to do to the computer?
Yeah, we're going to pass these out, and then Justin, you guys try to switch out. Switch the computer out.
So while, while they're switching, this is, it's ours.
Oh, is it? Okay. It's ours, yeah.
That's our, our computer.
Well, while they're switching out, the only thing that I'd like to let everyone know, that we are presenting this report
Thanks.
To the city council in accordance with two very important laws, and as indicated in the memorandum that was written by our finance director, the first law is Section 9.8 of the Berkeley City Charter that requires that an annual independent audit be made of all accounts of the City of Berkeley as required by state law, and second, we're doing this under Public Act II of 1968, as amended, which requires that the chief administrative officer of a municipality with more than 4,000 people file with the State of Michigan an annual audited financial report with an independent audit opinion on said statements. This, this act also requires that the municipality disclose any material deviations by the local municipality from generally accepted accounting practices or from applicable rules and regulations of any state department or agency. Furthermore, as Mr. Sabuda indicates in his report, we're, we've given to the city council to report, and the first one is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, better known as the CAFR. And council, before I say anything more or move from this item, I am very honored and very pleased to inform not just you, but the residents of the City of Berkeley, that this is the first time ever that the City of Berkeley has ever done and presented a CAFR. Now, in Michigan, the CAFR is not something that is required, we can simply do a, an audit like we've done in many, many years, but the CAFR goes, what I, what I say, above and beyond, and I'll, I'll let our auditors explain, and this truly represents a, a document that, that assures complete transparency to our residents with regards to our financial statements, and it is backed up by, because it is reviewed by our auditors, and there is information in there that is with more detail than ever before that talks about the CAFR, and, and our auditor will discuss that in, in a little bit. And then the second one is, the independent auditors report to the city council, which you've also received, and, and they'll go, they'll go over it in just a few minutes. So with that, just so that the auditors can have information to probably give the city council and the, our residents out there an overview of their findings, I'd like to turn it over to, to Ms. Bailey and, and let her begin her presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Beth Bailey, and I have with me Justin Bowman and Chris Woodard, and today we're going to be talking about the financial highlights of the city for the year. First off, I do want to expand on what the city manager mentioned regarding the CAFR. CAFR stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The reporting that you've done in the past meets the State of Michigan requirements for filing. The CAFR is really something that is a national award, it's from the Government Finance Officers' Association, or GFOA, and it really is, kind of puts you in a different league when you prepare a CAFR. There's a lot more information in the financial statement, it goes above and beyond in that you have a transmittal letter, which is basically put together by management and talks about different things that are going on in the city. In addition, there's some more detail related to your budgets, but the big piece of it that really, I think, is the part that probably took the most time is the statistical information. There's a whole separate section in the very back of the report, it has all sorts of information, 10-year trends in a lot of detail regarding all your revenue sources, your expenditures, your debt activity, your capital assets, has statistics in there about, you know, debt per capita, and even has things like, you know, number of streetlights and things like that. So a lot of detail, 10-year history, so that you can look at the trends, and what you'll be doing with this is you'll actually, now that you've prepared it, you'll be submitting it to the GFOA, and they have a group of people who actually go through the reports with really a fine-tooth comb, and hopefully, you'll end up with the award. Going forward, it shouldn't be as much work to update it, the bulk of the work really this year was in going back and getting all the historical information for the last 10 years. So I want to commend the finance director, Mr. David Sabuda, and also Becky Bakke, and also your city manager for all of the assistance that they put into it. I know it was a lot of work and a lot of effort, but keeping our fingers crossed that it, it pays off in terms of actually getting the GFOA award, and I encourage you really to read through the statistical information, because I think you'll find it really interesting to see just the growth in the city, some of the statistics that are in there are ones that I think will be of interest to you, so I encourage you to look at that. Also, I wanted to say that as we're going through the highlights of the financial statement, once again, the city did receive a clean audit opinion, which means that you have the highest level of assurance that your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. And just in an overview, if you've had a chance to look at the financial statements, you'll see that the general fund, the fund balance, which is your discretionary money in the general fund, balance, which is your discretionary money in the general fund, was up slightly this year. However, the major streets, local streets, solid waste fund were all down. And I'd consider the four of those really to be your main operating accounts that you need to look at in total. Those, in total, you just squeaked by, and that's the good news, is that you did just squeak by, especially in this economy. What we're anticipating is that the taxable value is going to continue to decrease slightly. It's definitely decreased again for this current year that you're in, and we're hopeful that there's maybe just one more year, but there could be a couple more years where you see some slight decreases, hopefully not to the extent that we've seen in the last few years. Your new millage that you have will, will help with that, but as I mentioned, your taxable value is decreasing at the same time. Even so, I think the city has done a really admirable job of keeping an eye on expenditures and also doing what you can to impact your legacy costs. Your legacy costs have increased over time, but they've been reasonable increases. You haven't seen any huge upticks in that. And I think that you're doing what you can to positively impact those liabilities by making some of the changes in the benefit structures and so forth. The other thing that really came to light in the audit was that you're continuing to invest in the city. You're making investments in infrastructure and equipment. You had about $1.7 million invested in various assets during this past year throughout the city. But at the same time, you're also paying down debt from previous assets. So, you've paid down about $1.1 million. So, even in this economic times, you've been able to continue to make an investment in the community and be fiscally responsible in paying down your debt. And I know that you also do have a very well-thought-out capital improvement plan to continue with those efforts going forward. So, as we look at the slides and look at some of the trends, again, I think the, the overall message is that the city did get through the year. The revenues you'll see are fairly flat, so the way that you got through the year and added slightly to your fund balance really was because of the attention that you paid to the expenses. And we just encourage you to continue with that going forward. I'm going to turn it over to Justin to go through the highlights. If you have any questions while we're going through the slides, feel free to interrupt us. And I should have mentioned too that Lisa, who's usually here with us this evening, is off on maternity leave. Otherwise, she would have been here as well.
Justin?
Thank you. As Beth said, we'll just go through some of the highlights from the audit, present, audit the results this year. The first slide we have here really shows your general fund revenue. First thing I wanted to point out was that really, we were within 1% of the budget amount, the actual on the right-hand side compared to the budget on the left. Actually, about $75,000 over budget. That's still a $17,000 decrease from last year, though, still. One thing that we were able to do to keep the revenues pretty consistent with last year was to qualify for all the EVIP funds from the State of Michigan, which is your state shared revenue. The state sources on the right-hand side of 1.2 million stayed really consistent with last year because of the work that was done on that. Property taxes decreased, as Beth had said, this year again. The revenue went down $241,000 in the general fund. This was made up slightly by increases in licenses and permits and the fines and forfeiture accounts. This next slide here is going to point out a little bit more about the declining property tax revenues, just kind of to explain what's going on here. On the 2009 column to the left, that shows the actual amount of revenue, property tax revenue for the general fund in 2009. And what we've done from there on with the other columns is show what it would have been had all the inflationary increases that were expected had occurred. And then, on the bottom, the blue part, shows the actual decrease of what really happened. So, really, the orange, the orange column there is going to be the revenue that's been lost due to the declining property tax values. As you can see, 2012, there's about a $900,000 difference from what was expected, or what there would have been, assuming property tax values had gone up with inflation, as it would have been expected back historically. And looking up to 2014, which is projected right now, there'll be a $1.3 million difference from what was projected to what there actually will likely be. Again, that is just projected, but that's where it looks like things are going. So, property tax value, one reason it's so important, it makes up 60% of revenue for the general fund. And the significant drop, as Beth said, it's still going to continue for a couple of years possibly. You need to keep, keep an eye out for it. This next slide here shows the general fund expenditures for the year. Left-hand side again shows your budgeted amount, right-hand side is the actual amount. Within 4% of the budget amount, but as Beth had mentioned as well, there's a, a big decrease in expenditures this year of about $333,000. A big part of that decrease was due to the decreased healthcare costs. The kind, the areas where it decreased, the general government went down about $71,000 in expenses. Public safety down by about $250,000. And recreation also down about $46,000. Other things occurred as well besides the healthcare expenses to reduce that number as far as, you know, staff organizations, other things such as that, but those are just kind of the key items. This next slide here shows a comparison of the, the post-employer, player benefit expenses. These are the retiree healthcare costs. The green column here shows the annual required contribution from the actuary report, which is done annually, or, sorry, triannually, actually. That's based on about a lot of assumptions. The actuary goes through, and it's based over 30 years. The actual amount paid this year is the amount on the right, the 1.1 million. So, you'll see a little bit of a difference between the actual required amount and the amount actually paid. The orange bar is really payments, current payments on pre-minister retiree healthcare. The blue bar was, which is actually about $134,000 is pre-funding contributions that were made. Just to put some other numbers out here, the actual, actual liability at 63009, which is when the last actuary report was done, was actually $17.6 million. So, it's a, it's a big number that is, the actuary says will eventually be owed to people that have retired. At 63009, the underfunded amount was 16 million. So, those are big numbers. The city does have a good start on funding this contribution. Currently, there's about $2.2 million of funds with MERS, who handles the investments for the retiree healthcare. Also, we've seen, one thing to point out is that this annual required contribution has gone down from the last actuary report that was done. Again, this was due to the, the reduction of the healthcare costs. Next slide here shows the general fund fund balance for the year. This is our second year, you would, you've seen this slide probably, because it's, we switched to under, to Gatsby 54 last year, which changed these classifications. They were all new in the prior year. The classifications we have are non-spendable, which is the orange piece, which really is your prepaid assets, your long-term advances to other funds. The restricted funds and assigned funds are really earmarked for fund balance, which isn't really available for everyday use. The most important number here is your unassigned amount of 2.4 million, which is the largest piece. That's really the part that's available for future use. So, budgeted expenditures on the previous slide were about $9 million. This number, this 2.4 million, is about 27% of the budgeted expenditures. Usually, we recommend the city to be around 25%. So, you're right where you need to be with that number. We'd recommend that you stay and try to, to maintain that 25% or thereabout percentage going forward, just to make sure that there's enough funds available in case anything were to happen. This slide here, the, the bottom's a little bit cut off, but you can see the columns show the actual increase in fund balance over the past couple of years. You'll see back in '08, fund balance was, was relatively high up at 3.7 million, then it declined the next couple of years. The, due to the, the costs, you know, the, the cost cutting and the maintaining the revenue, we've been able to, to slightly increase fund balance up to where, to a safe number. We think this number is, is appropriate, and it's really due to keeping the costs in check, to being able to increase it back up. We still recommend you watch it going forward and make sure it stays at a good amount, so can cover any costs that come up. This slide here shows the water and sewer fund. Wanted to point out that there, one cash outflow that's not shown on here is the debt payments that are made throughout the year, which is about $400,000. You'll see most of the, the revenue is operating revenue, which does cover the operating expenses, but when you add in the extra cash that goes out for the, the debt payments, that number gets smaller. That's, that's leftover. The net asset number, you'll see it's, there's a, a piece that's blue and a piece, piece that's green. The blue piece is about $9.4 million. That's all invested in capital assets. That's not money that's readily available for use. The amount that is available is about $2.3 million, which is the smaller green number. It's a healthy unrestricted net asset amount. We think that's appropriate. The, the rates appear to be being set appropriately based on having that, that amount of fund balance there. Also, just to point out, of that green, the green one on the bottom, a big piece that actually is, is receivables too, is that's not actually cash that's, that's on hand and available for use right now today. It's, it's dependent on receivables coming in from, from customers. And those, that's, that's all of our slides. That's what we think of some of the key items from the statements this year.
Any questions on the slides before we start on the letter?
Thank you, Justin. I'm going to go over this letter very briefly. Does everyone have the letter? It says, "Report to the City Council." Okay. If you flip over to page three, this would be the required communications under the auditing standards. We're required to communicate certain items to those charged with governance, which would be the council. At the bottom, we have an item about segregation of duties, and this would relate to basically your IT function and administrative access to the system in terms of being able to access the system and also having the ability to post transactions in an entity of your size. Sometimes, it's difficult to get an exact segregation of duties, but we have discussed this with the City Manager and with the Finance Director and come up with some options for, I guess, reassigning some of those responsibilities so that potentially this, next year coming up, we can not have this type of comment in here. Again, we didn't find any issues with there being any incompatible duties, but we're just required to bring it to your attention. On the top of page four, we have an item related to audit adjustments, which is something that we've had over the years, very common to have this. We have this everywhere we go. Here, we had a very small number of entries that we needed to make. We actually had a entry related to accrued payroll, utility billing, and capital outlay. So, fewer entries than we've had in the past and relative to other communities that we audit, that's a very low number of adjustments. And these would just be things that come up that are not your day-to-day accounting that you do. The day-to-day accounting is all 100% accurate. These are items that at the end of the year, in preparation for the audit, when we're out here doing the audit, we talk through with the finance staff and kind of come to a conclusion about what adjustments need to be made to actually fully close out the books for audit purposes. Again, nothing to be concerned about there. Starting on page five, these are some additional required communications. I'm not going to cover this in a lot of detail. On the middle of the page, plan, scope, and timing, we were able to stick to our plan, scope, and timing that we had communicated at the start of the audit. The city staff is very well-prepared. I can tell that they put a lot of focus and emphasis on this and make it a priority to prepare for the audit, which we really appreciate. Under significant audit findings, the only thing I'm going to point, point out is on page six, second paragraph talks about sensitive estimates. Most of the numbers in the financial statement would be actual numbers coming from invoices or receipts. As far as estimated numbers, the biggest estimate really relates to your retiree healthcare and that actuarial valuation that Justin mentioned that's done every three years, because you've only had to do that now for a couple of years, and you don't have the very long track record that you would have, say, for your pension. So, you're still kind of working through what are the appropriate assumptions. And we would look at those, and we would rely on the expertise of the actuary. We'd look at sort of the inputs that the city provided as well as the assumptions that are being used, and we determine that those estimates appear to be fairly calculated. Let's see here. I'm going to flip over to page eight. Couple of other things that we wanted to point out. The first one, the Public Safety Pension Trust, this is an item that we had talked about last year. You have a trustee who does the safekeeping for all of your investments in your public safety pension, and those money managers are responsible for the day-to-day, you know, trading and activity. And the city basically is recording your side of the transaction, which would be the tax money that comes in, the pension payments to the retirees and other miscellaneous items. What we're suggesting is just that the city also consider recording that activity that's going on kind of behind the scenes with the trustee, also recording that, probably not monthly, but maybe on a quarterly basis in your financial statements, rather than the process you have now is you record all of that at the end of the year. We don't think that there's any big risk here, but we are required to point it out. Some of the offsetting factors are that the pension board would look at that trustee information on a monthly basis, and as I said, you're posting your side of the transactions. But again, just something that we wanted to bring up. Also have an item in here about water loss. So, water loss would represent the difference between the water that comes into the city through the main meters versus, so there's a certain number of units that you're purchasing and paying for, and then there's a number of units that are actually being metered in all of the buildings and residences. And there's a difference between those two numbers, and that's what we consider to be water loss. And units of water can be lost because of water main breaks. They could be lost because you may have some old lines that are just, you know, have little leaks in them that are hard to detect. Can also come about if the meters in the homes and businesses are older and maybe are running slower, so they're not picking up exactly all of the usage. So, there's a lot of different reasons for water loss. What we wanted to point out is that it's been increasing. It was 7% of what you purchased was lost four years ago, went to seven and a half, and then to 10, and then to about 12.7. That's still a reasonable and normal level of water loss. We usually see somewhere between 10, 15%. We just wanted to point it out because it was, it was increasing, and we thought that it would be an area that, you know, you could potentially look into. Again, sometimes it's not easy to figure out why there's water loss. Sometimes, you have to put cameras down the mains and try to figure out what's going on. We also have some items related to IT controls. We do look at the IT controls as part of the audit, and there are fewer items here. City did implement some of the suggestions in the past. So, again, we just have a couple of them that we repeated. In the last section here, just going to go over a couple of things, the revenue sharing. As we mentioned, the EVIP program was new last year, and in order to obtain the amount of state shared revenue that you did, you had to meet the criteria in three different sections of the EVIP program, the accountability and transparency, consolidation of services, and then the employee compensation piece. This year that we're currently in, the EVIP program is still around, and you have similar types of requirements that you need to meet for this coming year. Also, wanted to mention that there has been a lot of talk lately about the personal property tax and elimination of the personal property tax. It's actually expected that something will happen in the lame duct sessions coming up here regarding personal property tax. There was a lot of stuff. I'm not even going to go over what else is in the letter, because that's actually changed. The, what we're showing in there is, was sort of the original proposal. Now, there's more proposals that were coming out today that said basically, another, I guess, option that they're looking at would potentially be trying to do away with it, but have some sort of replacement that would come out of use tax. And it basically would make cities hold for any millage that's going towards police and fire, and then reimburse for 80% of all of the other types of costs that the property taxes are meant to cover. So, keep an eye out for that. We'll see what happens. You know, the big sticking point there has been that Michigan Municipal League and some of the other organizations that represent communities have said that in theory, they understand the need to address personal property tax, but they want to make sure that there's a replacement tax out there, because it can be a significant part of your budget. One other pending legislation item that I wanted to mention is, there's some new proposals out there. Actually, this are, this is not pending. It, it just passed a couple of weeks ago, and they're called the benefit bonds. So, there's now the opportunity for the next two years for the city to consider whether or not you would want to issue bonds for your unfunded pension liability and your unfunded retiree healthcare liability. So, on the pension side, if you were to add together your MERS plan, which is for the general employees, and your public safety plan, together, it's about $9 million of unfunded liability. That, you're making your payments as required by the actuary every year, but this is the amount that's out there for you to pay down over the next, you know, however many years. And this would give you an option, if you felt it was prudent, to actually issue debt for that, and then you'd have a set- for that, and then you'd have a set debt payment that you would be making. Again, you can levy any taxes for it, it just has to come out of your general operating millage, but it's an option that's available. Along those same lines, there's options out there, and you have to meet a lot of criteria for this, so we'd have to kind of work through it. There's also an option out there for your unfunded retiree healthcare obligation, which for you is about $14 million that you need to fund over the next, you know, 30 years or so. So again, there'd be an option. You issue bonds, and then you have a set, you know, debt repayment schedule attached to that. Really, I think that's all that we wanted to bring up. Happy to answer any questions that you might have related to the audit or anything related to municipal finance that's going on.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any questions? Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, you guys, thank you so much for, for this information. I don't really so much have a, have a question per se, but just a couple of comments about what I think is the value of this, of this information and material here. So yeah, definitely second the, the congratulations that you offered to the staff and all the hard work that went into this material and producing the, the CAFRA report, I think, is, is great. And having that additional detail with all the appendices was, you know, actually pretty interesting reading. And I do think that, that the value of having the transparency of having this information here transcends any, you know, sure, it'd be great if we got the prize or the award or whatever, but I think it's about better clarity and understanding so that we can make fact-based decisions. And so I, I trust and have every confidence that that was the, you know, the motivation to, to push ourselves to go above and beyond the requirements for ourselves and for our residents and businesses. So thank you for that. I did think also that it was interesting that, from a financial reporting perspective, all the insights that you get into the operations of the, of the city and all the things that really go on, really say, if you, if you want to know about the, the values of a, of a community, just look at their budget. And as we look through things, like you said, the, the water loss thing, I'm glad you pointed that out. I found that really interesting. It's like, you know, to think that we could triangulate on, on, you know, a potential operational issue by, by following the numbers, but that's exactly the kinds of, you know, financial forensics, if you will, that, that went into this work, I thought was great. The IT controls, in addition to the segregation of duties and also the, you know, the controls, you know, smoke and water detection in the data center kind of thing, I thought was, was good awareness as well. So I wanted to thank you for that. That was really it, just mostly just wanted to, to say, I continue to find this to be a very useful tool for myself and my continued awareness and, and ability to help support. And I think it's a, it's an asset to the city, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Suboda.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of council. I just want to say thank you to the entire staff, the council, mayor, Mrs. De Sessa, the auditors. This was a true team effort. We couldn't have pulled this off without everyone coming to the plate and giving their best effort. It was, it was just tremendous, and I'm thrilled for the community, and I'm glad we're able to do it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Beth? Well, the one phrase that you used, Beth, that struck a chord for me up here was your summary statement, "We squeaked by." Let me tell you how we squeaked by. You have the numbers, but we had to make the decisions to make the numbers what they were. A lot of cutting of, of programs and services and cutting things that we really didn't want to cut, but the numbers forced those kinds of cuts. On the other side of that, we are enormously grateful to the residents of this community for passing a millage in August, so that it gives a little room to correct some of the items that we had to defer. We just simply didn't have the money. So when you see next year's budget, you will see, you know, some backfill for items that have been put, you know.
Yep. Can only put off for so long.
Can only put it off for so long. So we squeaked by. I too want to congratulate our finance department and the entire team that produced this very intense, careful, well-documented audit. I think we come out very well as a city. The management of the city's purse has been well done. Thank you. Beth, is there anything else you want to add?
Nope. That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three?
Oh, we need a roll call still.
Oh, we do, that's right. We need a roll call on R-4412.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Prince, item number three, please.
Ordinance number 0612, matter of adapting an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan to rezone property described as Lat. 319 of the Lackmore Boulevard subdivision from Parking District to Woodward District. First reading set date certain December 3, 2012.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 612?
Move to approve 0612.
Moved to approve by Mr. Councilmember Kadekko, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Council, the only thing I'd like to add, at least at this point in time, is just simply to inform everyone that a public hearing was held on October the 23rd, 2012 by the City Planning Commission to address this item. And based on, on the, on the hearing, they are recommending that the city council consider this rezoning. Please note that the city council has the final say on any rezonings, and just like an ordinance, this rezoning must have two readings before it is approved. Having said that, I'd like to ask our city planner, Ms. Amy Vanson, to please come up and give us a brief summary of, of this, of this report. Thank you, Ms. Vanson.
Good evening. The proposed rezoning that's before you is the little slice, the triangular slice that is between the alley and the apartment building behind the Vincetta Garage Restaurant. It's currently used as a parking lot. There's no proposal to change that. It would remain mostly a parking lot, but as you'll recall, when it was Vincetta Garage Car Repair, there's an outbuilding there. And when Vincetta Garage, the applicant was before us wanting to change it into a restaurant, they had initially proposed adding onto the building, the principal building on the south side, and they were advised they needed to go to site plan approval. And they wanted, even though our planning commission's very good and moves things along, they wanted to move things a little bit quicker, and so they asked, well, can we reuse the outbuilding that is in the parking lot? And so I did allow that, and they have converted that into a prep kitchen. They would now like to add a cooler, sort of a large cooler, according to the site plan, that would be attached to this outbuilding. And that was kind of my, where I drew the line. I said it was one thing to reuse a building, but it was another thing to add on to it when it was actually land that was zoned parking district, not business district. So they have applied for a rezoning, and again, as I said, there's no intention to convert any of the parking to anything other than, that's going to stay the same, and the outbuilding is going to be in an area that does not have a parking space in it. So this is not going to affect the parking at all. It is a refrigeration unit that's going to be installed. But we did want to make sure that the land was actually zoned accordingly. As I said, it's the triangular piece that's between the apartment building and the restaurant. The planning commission held a public hearing. There was some concern from the business neighbor, the Theosophical Society, that was concerned, as we all know, about parking. However, that wasn't really something that the planning commission could address, given the request that was before them. They did find that this proposal was in conformance with the master plan for the City of Berkeley and have recommended it to you. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Vanson? Mr. Mayor Protam.
It's not actually a question. It's, I guess it's just more kind of to reiterate what, what you just mentioned, Ms. Vanson. What we're looking at today is a specific issue about that, you know, triangular piece in the back, excuse me, rezoning it, you know, not going to lose any parking. The parking issue that we all understand is an issue and is something that we've been working on and something that the business has been working on, but that's not the issue that's at hand today. It is strictly this one, you know, part of the building, this rezoning. I just want to make sure that I'm on board with that and the rest of the council is. Everybody watching at home. If that's correct? Thank you.
It is correct. And as the applicant had indicated, and the applicant is here if you have additional questions for him, but he had indicated that this cooler is actually going to allow for fewer deliveries, so the alley will be less clogged. That's a good thing.
Very good. Are there any questions for the applicant either? And no one from the community has a comment on this. Yes, there's a lady down there who would like to comment.
I'm Marina from the Theosophical Society, and there's a couple of other members with me. We were directed by the committee, actually, to come here to express any concerns regarding the parking, but it doesn't seem to be appropriate timing. So I guess I need some advice. When can we bring this concern to the council? Because we are really suffering at the expense of our members who are elderly, primarily 60 and over, and people are not attending programs because they cannot find parking. We've had a number of falls by the members already because they have to walk such long distances. So if this is not the time, when can we?
This would not be the time to raise the question of parking. Question of parking is being examined as we go forward, and the owner of the restaurant is purchasing property and making more parking available and so on. So there's a number of things as we go forward here that are evolving. But I do understand that it is a difficult situation for some residents and businesses in that area, and hopefully we can resolve this over time. But this particular issue tonight that's before us is, is a different matter.
I understand. I just would like the council to keep in mind that every time the restaurant expands, there is an effect on parking.
I think the council is aware of that. Thank you for being here. Any other, any other issues with regard to this refrigeration question? I watched this, I know my colleagues also watched the planning commission meeting where this was discussed in detail, and every angle was carefully examined, and I'd like to thank the planning commission for the work they did in preparing this recommendation for us tonight. If there is no further discussion on this topic, then, Ms. Prince, would you please read, call the roll on ordinance 0612?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-6912, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment, amended agreement with George Beatty to provide plumbing inspection services.
Is there a motion to approve M-6912?
Motion to approve 6912.
Motion to approve by the Mayor Protam, support by Councilmember Plaid Onson. Mr. Sessa.
Council, back in January, you did approve Mr. Beatty's contract, and I'd like to report to everybody that we are very pleased with this work. Unfortunately, we neglected a very important item as part of this contract, and we are including it now, and we're asking you to, to add this to, to the contract. And that simply require that, well, it is already required that the plumbing inspector be a licensed plumbing plan reviewer, but also we're asking that the city charge this applicant for plan review and that the compensation proposed is $65 per hour. Again, we apologize for the inconvenience. This is something that we'd like to add. Ms. Vanson is here with me if, to help me answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Vanson, for coming to the microphone so promptly, but we seem to be able to call the roll on this without your assistance. Please call the roll on M-6912.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-7012, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute an amended agreement with Michael Monson to provide mechanical inspection services.
Is there a motion to approve M-7012?
Move to approve M-7012.
Moved by Councilmember Kadekko, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Council, unfortunately, this is a similar item. Again, we neglected to include this information in, in the contract. We are now asking that it be corrected, and we're also recommending that, that his compensation be $65 per hour. This has also been reviewed by the city attorney, and it is now in the contract.
Very good. Any discussion, questions on this? As before then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-7012?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-7112, matter of approving the 2012, 2013 winter maintenance agreement between the Road Commission of Oakland County and the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M-7112?
Motion to approve, support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support by the Mayor Protam. Mr. Sessa.
Council, this is an agreement that comes before you on an annual basis. In a nutshell, what this says is that the city will be reimbursed for a total of $9,107.80, which will be paid to the city in two installments. The first one in, in December for $3,187.73, and the second in March for $5,920.07. As you can see in the present, in the report that was put together by our Public Works Director, this number has been the same since fiscal year 2008, 2009. We've seen no change. It has remained the same for the last four years. We, we work very closely with the, with Oakland County Road Commission, and we believe that it is a, it is a, I can't say it completely fair, because we do more to help our roads, but, but it is, it is in line with their number, so we are recommending this for your consideration. I don't know if our Public Works Director, Mr. Schuler, would like to add to this. Mr. Schuler?
I'm sure we're thankful that it didn't go down.
Yes.
That's the point.
We are. Good evening. And obviously, it depends on what type of winter we have, we bill this amount, regardless if we have a winter like last year or we have a tough winter. Just to put it in perspective a little bit, I crunched the numbers. You know, you're looking at 15 to 20 plow actions, I'll call them, with this amount, and that, you know, is a reasonable amount, I think, for the year. Obviously, it depends on how much snow we get. For the larger storms, we do plow our majors twice, once at the beginning, once at the end. You know, it becomes a level service type issue in our minds, so last year was a good year, and we're hoping for the same this year.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Plaid Onson.
Quick question, and this is partially for the people at home to understand what this is for. Can you tell us what, what road this covers? What this is for?
Sure.
And also, does this cover our costs, and is it an equal level of service? So are we doing more than this? Are we doing more than they would be doing if, if they were doing it, et cetera?
Good question, and this is for 12-mile between Greenfield and Woodward. So this is the entire stretch of 12-mile, which is a county jurisdiction road that we choose to maintain because we believe we can provide, and we do provide, a higher level of service regarding the plowing and salting that occurs on that road. Another way of saying that is, you know, we can get out there faster and quicker and more timely than the Road Commission does, so it provides a higher level service to our residents and the businesses of Berkeley. So we choose to do this.
Thank you. And I, I don't think there's a resident out there that would claim that Berkeley doesn't have the, the best plowed streets in the area, and I know that I'm thankful for it, and I'm sure our residents are as well, so thanks for that.
That's one of the more common things, the positives that we hear at the DPW, is our snow plowing, so I'm very appreciative of our staff.
And we are too, and so are the residents. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your report and for your diligence in staying on top of this stuff. I think as a follow-on question to, to my colleague, and I believe you touched on this, but just to kind of help be clear, in terms of the, the cost, you know, the return that this positions for us here, you gave the number of about 15 to 20 actions, plowing actions. And so, so what I, if I could interpret that, if we have less than that, then we'd come out a little bit ahead in this arrangement, and if, if we need to do what we need to do to maintain that high-quality level of service and it exceeds that, that range, then, then we'll still do what we need to do to, above and beyond the reimbursement. Is that, is that a fair way?
That is, that is correct. That's a fair way of saying it.
Yeah, yeah, good. All right, thank you. Thanks. and it exceeds that range, then we'll still do what we need to do to, above and beyond the reimbursement. Is that, is that a fair way?
That is correct. That's a fair way of saying it.
Yeah, yeah, good. All right, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member Blanchard?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I thought there are additional roads, county roads in the city, that, and this is the only one that we have to, we have to plow?
Twelve Mile, and then there's also, Greenfield is the other one. But the county, based on my experience, has done, you know, an okay job with that place. I think this, probably the history of this is our downtown area, and maintaining that high-level service on a core road. Greenfield is the other county jurisdiction road that we have.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. If there are not any other questions, thank you, Derek, for being here.
Thank you.
And Ms. Prince, please call the roll on M seventy-one twelve.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now Ms. Prince, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M seventy-two twelve, matter of awarding a contract for two thousand eleven senior home chore lawn maintenance and snow removal service to Kelly Lawn Service, Land Technologies, and Logan Lawn Care. Total cost to be incurred is eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and will be paid from account number two seven five dash nine four zero dash eight one eight dash zero two three.
Is it a motion to approve M seventy-two twelve?
Motion to approve, seventy-two twelve.
Motion to approve by mayor Protem Turbrack, support by council member Stedman. Ms. Sessa.
Council, this is, this is an item that we brought, we're bringing before you in order to correct. We should have brought this item before you in two thousand eleven. This is something that we do on an annual basis. And as you can see in the report, we did go out to bid, and we did follow the appropriate procedures. Unfortunately, we failed to come before you and ask you to follow this. This item was budgeted, it was approved through the city council, but it, we missed one step, and that was to come before you and ask you. We are asking now to correct this step, and ask the city council to consider approving this. I know that this is after the fact, but we did follow the appropriate steps. We just did not come before the city council, and we sincerely apologize for that. The Parks and Recreation Director is here, Mr. Tom Caldwell, happy to answer any questions, Your Honor. We're not here to make excuses. We'd like to simply correct it and address it, and happy to answer any questions, Your Honor.
Very good. So this seems to be a housekeeping kind of corrective action item here. Are there any questions about this item? Council member Baker?
Thank you for the diligence in bringing this back so that we could have this discussion and to move forward with confidence. And just for clarity, this is talking about the two thousand twelve program? And is there, or two thousand eleven? And so as far as the, looking forward, do we anticipate a similar action?
We are bringing it before you at the next item. The next item is the twelve. So we're not letting it happen again.
Good. Just wanted to kind of get that out there.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is, the first one is to take care of the past, and then the second one is to move forward.
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
Excellent. Thank you.
We didn't think it would be right to just not bring it before the city council.
Exactly.
We thought it'd be best to face.
Very good. Well, then, if there isn't any further discussion, please call the roll on M seventy-two twelve.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now Ms. Prince, please read item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M seventy-three twelve, matter of awarding a contract for two thousand twelve senior home lawn maintenance and snow removal service to Kelly Lawn Service, Land Technologies, and Logan's Lawn Care. Total cost to be incurred is five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and will be paid from account number two seven five nine four zero eight one eight zero two five.
Is it a motion to approve M seventy-three twelve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by council member Stedman.
Support.
Support by council member Kadekko. Ms. Sessa.
Council, well, I'd like to ask our director of Parks and Recreation to give you a brief overview as to what this grant, or this contract is all about. I'd also like to point out that, as you can see, the funds that are available are much lower. In eleven, we had eight thousand nine hundred and fifty. Now, in this year, we're looking at five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So that is, that is a big, big change, big reduction, reduction. So with that, Mr. Caldwell, can you please give us a brief summary of this program, please?
Good evening, Council. This is the program that provides snow removal and lawn maintenance to seniors of our community. Excuse me. Can't seem to kick it. Excuse me, sorry. The seniors do, need to fill out a form to be eligible for the program. We've done a number of things to extend the dollars that we do receive over the past few years. In the heyday of the program, we were able to pay contractors to do fall and spring cleanups of senior yards, seniors' yards. We did gutter cleaning. We did handiwork around people's homes, and now we've turned to volunteers in the community to help us accomplish that. The Friends of Parks and Recreation did a great job. A couple of weekends ago, they had a dozen homes, and they went out and did fall cleanups, finished up the leaves. And it's measures like that that have really helped us extend the life of the program. It's not a free service. The seniors, based on their income, do have a co-pay into the city. We send the contractors out, we pay the contractors through our finance department, and then we request reimbursement through the county. So that's where we get reimbursed. So with the federal funds, the co-pay from the seniors, we're able to make this program go. We aren't completely sure what measures we're going to do to keep the program running into the future. Our average over the last three years was about eighty-two hundred dollars. We're just finishing up the two thousand ten money. So even though we just brought two thousand eleven before you tonight, there has not been a loss of service. The seniors have gotten their lawns taken care of, and, you know, obviously, in the winter, it really is going to depend on how much snow we get. You know, if we have a winter like last year, then, you know, we won't spend as much money. But, you know, a tougher winter will certainly affect the program. So we're continuing looking at ways to improve the program, improve the service to the community as well as help its longevity.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Council member Blanchard?
Thank you, Mayor. This is two thousand twelve. Is this a calendar year program, a fiscal year program, or we're at the end of two thousand twelve already?
Yes, the federal funds usually get released sometime in the middle of the calendar year, and then it gets delivered to each state. They send it down to each county, and then the county disperses their dollar figure to each community. And so typically, you'll see us requesting approval for the two thousand twelve, eleven, you know, at the end of the year, because it just takes that much time for everything to filter down and get the information on how much money we're actually going to have. The two thousand thirteen money hasn't been approved yet. It probably won't be approved until August, September.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, to answer the council member's question, this is budgeted in the twelve thirteen fiscal year, this current fiscal year, the fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay, very good. Councilman Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Caldwell. First, I want to congratulate and thank the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation. I know that they were working diligently over the last few weeks to help the seniors. I noticed here that there's one less bidder here. Did he choose not to bid, or was it because of the funds that he's not part of this year's?
Yes, we used that contractor in the two thousand ten financial year, which has run us up until now. But they're, they're not a Berkeley business. They had to travel from a ways away, and so they opted out. Now, they did bid for two thousand eleven money. That happened last November, but since then, they've chosen to excuse themselves from the program. But, you know, we have three great Berkeley-owned contractors that, you know, are passionate about helping our people and work really well with us. So we can definitely handle the program with the contractors that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're always especially pleased when Berkeley contractors get those bids.
Definitely.
Ms. Prince?
Steve? Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick follow-up on the, looking at the twelve thirteen one now. Again, thank you for this. You mentioned earlier about the co-pays, that the recipients of this program will speak. For those of us at home, or those of us interested in this information, is it, the co-pays, have they stayed flat? Have they gone up? Have they gone down in the cycle?
We have, that's our decision, and we haven't raised them in a couple of years. You know, that's certainly something that we'll have to take a look at. It's certainly something that we don't like to do.
Right.
One of, one of the next steps may be to, you know, we've got this formula where, you know, in the beginning of the season, April, May, maybe even June, we have the contractors go out twice a month. And then in the heavy growing seasons of June, July, and August, they can go out weekly. You know, maybe we look at something like, something like that, you know, where we don't send them out every week. You know, again, that affects service, and, you know, we'll take a look at all the different options we have before us, and, you know, continue to try and, you know, provide the best thing we can for the seniors of our city.
Well, thank you for that. I do appreciate the diligence to maintain that predictability around the price point, so those who can budget for that can do so with confidence. I think that's great. And also, I'd like to echo the sentiments of gratitude to those who are helping to support this initiative above and beyond what we're able to fund here. As was mentioned earlier, this is about three thousand dollars less than in prior years, and with that comes some, comes some really tough decisions and alternate ways to get things done. And I want to thank you for your memo that describes some of the effort that's helping with that, like, for instance, the gutter cleaning thing, where we'll be working with community volunteers to help do that in lieu of these contractors here. So those are the kinds of things that coming together to provide that service, I think, is admirable. And back to your comments from earlier, Mr. Mayor, about the difficult choices that we've had to face coming into this fiscal year, so that we can move forward with some degree of quality programming here, so.
Sure. You know, and since I've been involved over the last six years, it has been, you know, decreasing each year. And, you know, one of the ways that we can really get around it, as you can see from the memos, there's forty-four seniors that are currently involved in the program that live in all different areas of our great community. I think that maybe in a couple places, there are two seniors that live on the same block. How great would it be if we can get a volunteer program going with the residents of our community, where, you know, each block, they take care of a senior's lawn and driveway, and they take care of the grass cutting and the snow removal service? So that is another thing that we've talked about, and something that you'll see from our department moving forward, looking for volunteers in the community that take care of seniors, and they don't have to worry about their co-pay or the reimbursement. So if there is anybody watching tonight that's interested in helping out, I'm glad to talk to you about it.
And they would call?
Parks and Recreation Department number is six five eight thirty-four seventy.
Thank you, Tom, and I hope your cold gets better.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Ms. Prince, please call the roll on M seventy-three twelve.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, would you please read item number nine?
Resolution number R forty-five twelve, matter of approving a resolution of the city council of the city of Berkeley designating the time and place of city council meetings and its rules and orders of procedure.
Is it a motion to approve R forty-five twelve?
Motion to approve forty-five twelve?
Motion to approve by mayor Protem Turbrack.
Support.
Support by council member Kadekko. Ms. Sessa.
Council, this is something, again, that you take a look at on an annual basis. Everything stays pretty much the same as we've done in past years. The one item that I would like to bring to your attention for correction is section six, five C. It really should read, instead of five A through five D, it should read five A through five C. And this is where it talks about vacancy, because there's only, if you go to section C, or section six, you'll see there's only three sections. So Councilman Blanchard brought this to my attention. Again, we will correct this. This, these have been the same rules that you've adopted in the past, and no changes at this time.
Okay. Anybody on the council would like to make any changes or suggest any discussion on any of the rules? Ms. Plaid Onson?
I think if you replay last year's meeting at this time, this may be the same thing I said last year, but I'm going to say it again, just to keep us thinking about it. We do have in here that the Daily Tribune shall be the official newspaper for publication. Two things. Most of our residents don't necessarily get the Daily Tribune, so it's not necessarily the best way, most effective way to communicate with them. And we don't really talk very much about making sure things are on our website. I know we try to do that stuff, but it might be something where we think about changing this to include some of our more effective forms of communication to reach as many people as possible. Wasn't exactly the same as last year, I don't think.
Any additional comment beyond that? Ms. Sessa?
I guess the, and I understand, council member, you're absolutely right. We could identify, but in accordance with our city charter, it does require us that we identify a newspaper, and that is why that is in there. But we do utilize other methods, and we do sometimes go to other newspapers in order to advertise or inform our residents. Obviously, we use our cable, we use our website, we do some newsletters through our Parks and Recreation Department, we do press releases, all, so many things. But this is just to comply with that, with that ruling under the city charter, that we identify a newspaper. And unfortunately, I cannot change the city charter unless it is done by a vote of the people. So for now, that is the best reason I can explain as to why that's kept there. But I understand your point. Yes.
Council member Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for that explanation. I do have that same recollection and interest in that, and I think perhaps it's an "and", not an "or" here, although we could talk about, you know, the utility of the newspaper, certainly it's part of the charter, and it's a longstanding institution in its own right. Perhaps for subsequent opportunities to look at this material, maybe anticipating about the same time next year, some or all of us may be in a situation to have this dialogue, we could propose some additional paragraphs on this that enumerate some of the additional avenues that we described, because those are all very valid and beneficial approaches, and to ensure that it's in a material like this would help communicate to those, you know, that we do leverage these and other mediums, you know, the Facebook, Twitter, among so many others initiatives, to help keep our residents informed. So I'd like to see, I'm fine with this, given our conversation, and I have confidence in the administration. And at the same time, I'd like to see us, you know, take that step forward in describing those additional avenues in here, as either as sub-paragraphs, whether we use three or four paragraphs as we see fit, to add that material in here. I think that would be, it would be helpful, so that we have it for subsequent years.
We will bring it to you much sooner, much earlier, next year, so that we can add the requirements that you're recommending. And, but I will recommend to the city council that you do change section C.
Right.
And then we can correct that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Stedman?
I just wanted to bring up a discussion several years ago. In fact, I think it was the first year that I served, first month that I served on this
Thank you, as always, a historical, uh, piece to the decisions that have been made in the past.
It was quite the controversy.
I'm sure.
We will bring it earlier.
Well, uh...
Is there room to research? We don't, is there, you know, maybe something has changed over the, not that you've been up here for such a long, long time, aging before us, no, um, but it's probably been a few years since the discussions.
No, I just wanted to give you a little history of it.
Yeah, no, that's good to know. I was wondering if it's worth checking again.
Ms. Prince?
I just want to add that, because our department does most of the legal advertising, that we have a historical agreement with the Tribune that our rate is significantly lower than any other paper. We save a lot of money by going through them.
And that catches our attention.
Tell the backstory here.
That's right, well...
There's always reasons why we do this.
These are historical and, uh...
I can give you an example. For instance, uh, the notice of election, under normal circumstances, would have cost almost a thousand dollars, and it was a little under $400.
On that wonderful note, I think we could call the roll now. Ms. Prince, please call the roll on R-4512.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
This involves the change, right?
This involves the modifications, correct.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it.
Correct, the modifications.
No, yes, okay.
Yes, we're all yes. Very good. Ms. Prince, please read item number 10.
Okay. Uh, motion number M-7412, matter of approving the meeting dates of the City Council of the City of Berkeley for 2013.
Um, is it a motion to approve M-7412?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekla. Mr. Sessa.
Council, again, this is an annual item that comes before you and you identify which dates you will be meeting in the upcoming year. You do have the correct year on these, on this latest memo, I sincerely hope. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions on the schedule of meetings?
Mr. Mayor, can I just point out something?
Sure.
Uh, I'm sure the, the city clerk wants me to say this, so let me just say it now. In her, uh, in this, in this schedule, uh, the proposal, just so you know, and so the public will know too, that, uh, this does not include a minimum of two regular, uh, budget work sessions that are going to be scheduled in May and the months of July, August, and September. Uh, so that, those dates for the next year are yet to be determined, but, uh, but just so everybody knows that there are other meetings that you will be attending. Uh, and then also, uh, January 21st and January, and February 18th are holidays and the city offices are closed, which is why we're not meeting there. And then also that she's requesting that the meeting on the first Monday in November be canceled due to the November, uh, general election. And all of these, uh, all of this, uh, this whole memo, it's what we've done in the past, Your Honor, it is, it's no different.
Very good. Any other discussion on this topic? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you again, Your Honor, and I guess just to help with that too, the, um, prior gen items, we talked about compliance with the, uh, the city charter and the requirements set forth for proper governance and, and meeting cadence and it's, uh, my understanding that this does meet the, the spirit and the letter of the, of the charter to ensure that we have a, we exceed the minimum number of required meetings, um, to stay, uh, you know, um, focused on the matters at hand and to be, uh, accessible and available to the residents. So, so this meets the, that charter, um, requirement as well. Yes, thank you.
Very good. There's no further discussion then. Ms. Prince, please call the roll on M-7412.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 11?
Resolution number R-4612, matter of approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Berkeley and the PSO and PSO Command Labor Units, Berkeley Public Safety Pension System.
Is it a motion to approve R-4612?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Turbrack. Mr. Sessa.
Councilback, in, uh, in May of 2008, the, uh, Public Safety Pension Board requested a letter of determination from the IRS in order to ensure that the Berkeley Public Safety Pension System was a qualified pension system under section 401A of the Internal Revenue Code. This determination is required every five years in order to, so that we can maintain our tax exempt status for the Berkeley Public Safety Pension and all pension systems in general, uh, just so you know. Uh, we did get a, a letter back from the IRS, uh, on, uh, July 16th, 2012, telling us that, uh, we did receive, our plan did receive a favorable plan determination. And, uh, obviously, this will ensure now that our pension system will continue to enjoy favorable tax treatment in all areas of operation into the near future. Of course, this is still contingent upon us putting all this information as part of our, uh, of our plan, and that's what we're asking the city council to do today. With that, I don't know if our finance director, Mr. David Sabuda, who prepared this memorandum for you, would like to add any more. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mrs. De Sessa, Mayor O'Dwyer, and council members. You recall, um, in September, September of 12, we had a, an item that, regarding compensation, that the Internal Revenue Service wanted us to, um, pass, and the unions had agreed. This time, what you had before you is a similar situation, not dealing with compensation, but if you'll recall, in 2009, the Internal Revenue Service waived drawing your benefit at 70 and a half. There's a mandatory, um, with, uh, withdrawal from your accounts, whether it's an IRA or a 401A plan. This was done in '09. Well, the, uh, the IRS came to us late August, early September of this year, asking us to amend the plan for that possibility. Has absolutely no effect on the current Berkeley Public Safety Pension System. However, in order to stay in compliance with Internal Revenue Service rules, we need to pass this, um, these definitions and this memorandum of understanding. Further, what the IRS is asking us to do is, is, um, approve a new, um, definition for distributi, and, um, basically has really nothing to do with the Berkeley Public Safety Pension System or the MERS system. Uh, and basically what it does is, um, allows for an eligible non-spouse beneficiary, very rare in pension systems, okay? But you have to add that in for Internal Revenue Service purposes. The unions have executed their side of the memorandums of understanding, and we would request tonight that you would authorize Mrs. De Sessa to, uh, execute those two memorandums of understanding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the clarification. Any discussion on this? Mr. Sessa?
Just a comment, Your Honor, that we do have, uh, in the audience, members of the, uh, of the pension, uh, are here as well, and so if they'd like to, uh, add anything else, uh, please feel free, or to help me address any questions that the city council may have. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion on this? It, it seems to be, uh, a compliance issue basically with the IRS. And, um, the unions have signed off on their side of it, and this is, uh, our turn to sign off on our side of it.
Correct.
And, uh, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R-4612?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 12?
Resolution number R-4712, matter of approving a resolution of the City Council of the City of Berkeley authorizing amendment to the 2012-13 operating budget.
Is it a motion to approve R-4712?
Move to approve R-4712.
It's been moved by Councilmember Kadekla.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Council, uh, as we always do on a regular basis, in accordance, in accordance with Public Act II of 1968 as amended, uh, we are making some necessary budget adjustments for your consideration. And with that, what I'd like to do is have our finance director go over these items and help me address any questions that the city council may have. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mrs. De Sessa, again, Mayor, Mayor O'Dwyer and council members. You have before you this evening five budget amendments. What we are asking for tonight is, uh, more increased spending of approximately $15,560, and we're, um, appropriating for new revenue of $3,060. Um, the first item is a new item. Basically, uh, we have in our arsenal of permits and fees, um, a, a permit that we, we're going to institute. Uh, it deals with, uh, how buildings are constructed after a fire and investigation. Uh, the planner has, the city planner has, um, estimated approximately $560 in revenues coming in under this permit fee, and we anticipate about $400 in expenses. So this is, what happens here is, building will burn down and the inspector will come in and see how the building is constructed. This is in no way a duplication of what the fire inspector does. This is a whole different scope of work. Item two is a reclassification of appropriation. The amendment is required to recognize and pay for the cost of a replacement of dispatch monitors and various equipment issues at the Public Safety Department. Uh, so what is happening here is the dispatch area is getting $2,500 worth of equipment and the, uh, operations section of the Public Safety Department is, is defraying those costs. Uh, item C is a, um, new program, honor guard. What is happening here is the Public Safety Department has received gifts in the amount of $2,500. There's no tax dollars here, and they're going to spend it on an honor guard, um, uniforms and training. Uh, the program right now is at $2,500, and this gets the, uh, program off the ground. Again, no tax dollars here, all donation. Item D is, uh, tax tribunals. Part of the, uh, uh, appeal process is going, after you go to board review, if you, uh, don't get a favorable decision, you can appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. And in the downtown development area, it has been a heavy appeal. Um, we're looking at an additional $10,500, uh, in benefit, in taxes already awarded. So we need an amendment, uh, to pay for those, uh, for those costs. Uh, the final item is, um, another $2,100. Uh, what we're doing is we're carrying forward an appropriation from last year into this year to defray costs. Uh, you'll, you may recall back in August, we did the same thing, uh, where we were bringing in appropriation from the prior year into the current year in order to pay last year's costs because the program didn't get spent in the prior year. Um, and that's what's happening with item E. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for the finance director? As you were talking about the fire inspection?
Yes, sir.
Uh, item?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it, it occurred to me, uh, to connect that with the audit report that was talking about, uh, water loss. Well, if, in the event of a fire, when we use water to extinguish a fire on the hydrant...
Yes, we would.
Does that fall under water loss?
Yes, it does. Absolutely.
So therefore, if we had either training or...
Yes.
Fires, that could in part at least explain what the audit was getting at.
Yes. Also, another area in regards to that is if you're just doing general maintenance and you just open the hydrants up.
Yeah.
Okay? You're using it and we're not selling it, so that would also, uh, incur a water loss there.
But, uh, these are, uh, obviously normal costs of doing business.
Yes, they are, sir.
Very good. Any other questions on this, um, financial amendment on the budget? Very good, seeing none then? Oh, we got one.
It's not exactly a budget question, but for the public, could we talk about what an honor guard is and what it will do? Can anybody answer that?
Our public safety?
Yeah, any of our guests in the audience?
You sat here all day hoping you'd ask us a question.
That's not true. You declined to speak before.
I'm, I'm gonna actually turn it over to, uh, Public Safety Officer Brian Lady. He spearheaded this program from the very beginning, and he knows more about it than anybody else, so if I can, I'll just turn it over to him.
Thank you, Council. Uh, like you said, it has been kind of a work in progress, the honor guard. Our goal is how can we represent Berkeley to other communities and how do we give the most respect to fallen officer families? And with, uh, use of donations, hopefully we get this, this program in, in progress.
Brian, what, what does it involve exactly?
Uh, it's quite a bit of training. A lot of times, we're called on for mostly funerals.
Okay.
For like the Veterans Day or Memorial Day. Hopefully, we, uh, collaborate with American Legion or anything that the council says honor guard would be a good addition. And yeah, we'd love to be a part of it.
I, I think it's a, a nice idea. And, um, there are many situations where, you know, honors need to be rendered in specific circumstances, and these funds will allow this to happen.
We hope so, yes, sir.
Very good.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
This is completely voluntary on our personnel. They're, they're donating their time above and beyond their normal...
Right.
...day operations to be a member of the honor guard and then to serve as a member of the honor guard. So there'll be, there'll be no tax dollars, uh, in play in this. It'll be completely through donation and volunteers from our department, so.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one, how many members do you envision having in your honor guard?
Uh, we hope to get somewhere around the number six, um, as donations progress and once it gets out to the public and they see us at various events, then hopefully we move up to, to the number six.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Kadekla?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sergeant Officer. I know you have the Goodfellas Fund through the Public Safety Department. Is this another fund and how does one go about donating to, specifically to the honor guard?
Thank you, Councilman. We have, we have several funds set up, as you know, that are, are for our donations. Uh, one is the, uh, Lids for Kids Fund, and then the other is the, uh, the one you just brought up, I apologize, it slips my mind.
Goodfellas.
Goodfellas, thank you. This is in addition to, uh, but it does fall under the same public relations unit where we will still do through Mr. Sabuda, the funding comes in, but they're, they're kept completely separate. So Lids for Kids will be separate from the others. Uh, you can donate through the same way, contact either myself or Public Safety Officer Lady. Our number at the station's, uh, 248-658-3380. And also, the email is behindthebadge@berkeleymich.net, and we'll, we'll get to, uh, tell you how to get through it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? A point of clarification, we account for the Lids for Kids program and the honor guard program. We do not, um, account for or, or ta, uh, deal with, for lack of a better term, uh, the Goodfellow program. That's all done separately at, uh, through the, uh, the PSO Department. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It is amazing how many programs our Public Safety Department supports and provides to the community, um, on the officer's own time. And we are singularly blessed as a city to have the quality of personnel that we have in our Public Safety Department, and, and we're grateful for all you do to keep us safe and the generosity of going above and beyond the call of duty in so many ways. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R-4712?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the communications, uh, portion of tonight's meeting, and I believe Councilmember Kadekla is up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to give my condolences to former council member and Mayor Protem Dale Goodcourage, uh, and the entire Goodcourage family on the passing of their father and grandfather, William Goodcourage Senior, uh, about a week ago. One of our colleagues had a very special birthday last Sunday, and, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, Councilmember Blanchard on the milestone of 35, and, uh, keep up the great work. Uh, last week, I was fortunate enough to attend the senior lunch at the community center, and I want to thank Sue Thornton, the senior coordinator, as well as the entire Parks Last week, I was fortunate enough to attend the senior lunch at the community center, and I want to thank Sue Thornton, the senior coordinator, as well as the entire Parks and Recreation staff. It's always a good time when you're around the seniors. They had a potluck, and it was really a lot of fun. I think on November 6, Berkeley's best vote was our city clerk and her entire staff. I have heard compliment after compliment on how smooth the election went in the City of Berkeley, and I want to thank you, Cheryl, and your staff. Earlier, when now Sergeant Hadfield was here and all the officers were here, I leaned over to the city manager, and I said, "Who's protecting us?" And, you know, in all sincerity, when you have, you know, the residents that like you and everything, but when your colleagues, as many of those, show up, is a true tribute to Andrew, and I want to congratulate him. As we sit here and we say thank you for everything we have, I want to wish everyone a happy and a healthy Thanksgiving. But more important, let us pray for peace around the world, especially in the recent uprising in the Middle East. May we all have a peaceful world soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Plaid Onson?
I don't know if I can follow that.
Sorry.
Yeah. That was tough. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and say welcome to who I think must be Berkeley's newest resident. My cousin Julia just bought a house down the street from me. I'm going to attribute it to participating in many a wonderful Chamber Pub crawl that she wanted to make. But welcome to her, and it's a real compliment to the city staff that we have so many young people wanting to buy homes in our community, and so welcome to her, and thank you to them.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few quick items. First, I also would like to congratulate now Sergeant Andrew Hadfield. I have lived in Berkeley with Mr. Hadfield for a long time. We both grew up here, played baseball together, all those things. So for me, it's, and actually Officer Arnie as well, so it's really, you know, impressive for me, and it means a lot to see the guys that I grew up with now, you know, being so involved in taking on leadership roles in the community, both as public safety officers and now with Sergeant Hadfield. I have seen his work in the community firsthand, you know, his involvement. I am not talking about seeing him arresting people and all that good stuff. I don't see that. I've heard good things about that. He tests well. But he is very involved. I've seen him at schools. I've seen him, you know, at Lids for Kids, at all of the programs, and he really cares about his community. Not that any of the officers do not, but it's a fantastic thing, so certainly congratulations to Sergeant Hadfield. Also, over the last couple months, few weeks, City Council, we have approved a number of resolutions or made a number of resolutions for various health care issues. The month of November has its own health care issue associated with it. It's called Movember sometimes, and it's to raise awareness for men's health care issues, prostate cancer, and other health issues that will impact males. Although we didn't pass a resolution asking all of the males in Berkeley, or anyone who's able to grow a mustache, I took it upon myself to show my support this month. Believe me, there is no other way my wife would allow me to leave the house looking like this if it were not for such a good cause. So please, try to, you know, if you see anybody who is sporting a mustache, that generally does, and it is to try to raise awareness for a lot of men's health issues. There are a lot of donations that also happen during the month of November for research to try to help stamp out a lot of the diseases that face men specifically. Finally, I too would like to wish everybody a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Many of us are very lucky for the things that we have, and will be able to have Thanksgiving meals with friends and family and, you know, the ability to have a meal. It's also important to remember that there are some, not some, but many people around our community that will not have that privilege this Thursday. So if there is anywhere you see that you can donate to or help those who are certainly less fortunate, I encourage everybody to do that, especially during this very important holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this is stuck on pretty good and proper now. I might try to see if I can keep this around a little bit longer, but thank you again for helping raise awareness about men's health issues, which are important for many of us around the community for all the right reasons. I did just want to mention, too, that Berkeley's Downtown Development Authority, DDA, had its latest board meeting last week's Wednesday, the 14th. One of the items of interest for this body and for the residents and folks at home is with the notion of wayfinding. So one of the items on the DDA agenda was to review and approve an analysis and series of recommendations to come as it pertains to this notion of wayfinding. So what is wayfinding? Well, it's a way of, it's a method of encompassing all of the ways in which people orient themselves in a community and navigate from point A to point B. So it's, when we think of wayfinding, some of the outputs or artifacts from such a thing is a plan that helps talk about signage, directions, and indicators. But it's a lot more than just signs, right? Because we have signs now, and signs can help, but it's about the community's image. It's about our brand. It's how we see ourselves, and it's how we get from point A to point B. So it's at the gateways to the community and also within the city to help us understand where the key items of interest are and where the community gathers and things like that. So we look forward to the work with the DDA and thank them for their time in embarking on this journey. It's a three or four-month effort to look at a series of options and come forth with a recommendation. We look forward to seeing that and helping find our way. The Historical Committee, Berkeley Historical Committee, met on Sunday, November 18th, and they have finished remodeling the museum. If you haven't been to the museum in a while, I'd certainly encourage you to take another look. One of the things I like about the work that the committee does is every couple of years, they'll think about the museum from different ways. They incorporate feedback from residents and other visitors to the museum in ways to help illustrate and preserve and promote the city's history. And so they've finished a remodel just in time for the open house coming up on the Holiday Lights Parade here coming up soon. So if you haven't had a chance to go to the museum, it's free. They're open most Sundays from 2:00 till 4:00, and also special appointments are available. So please check that out if you get a chance. From the Michigan Municipal League, that was mentioned earlier as part of the audit results from the financial perspective, the Board of Trustees met in Lansing on Friday, November 9th, and I learned something in terms of the history of the league. They were formed in 1899, so it's quite an esteemed organization. It's been around for quite some time, the Michigan Municipal League. And their motivation for coming together was the notion of cooperation solves any problem. And so as a league of municipalities, I love that they started off with such noble intentions and continue along that agenda today, this notion of cooperation solves any problem. At that board meeting, we discussed the election results, because this was just recently after the November election, transit initiatives, and about the personal property tax. It was mentioned again in the audit report earlier this evening. The notion of "Replace, Don't Erase" is a catchy slogan that really embodies the principles that the league and cities like Berkeley seek to advance as it pertains to the personal property tax. You know, if the right thing to do is to address that issue, then we want to do so in a responsible way, and that means don't just erase that source of funding. There are some cities that are really dependent on that revenue, as over 50% of some of their capital, of some of their general funds. In Berkeley, we are dependent on that as well. Some of the rough numbers are around 250,000, which is about a half a mil when you think of the dependence that we have on our personal property tax. So this notion of "Replace, Don't Erase" is important to us. There is draft legislation working its way through the system, as was mentioned earlier, kind of adding a lot of complexity and looking at things, but it's working its way through the machinery. As anything does begin to emerge, certainly we'll stay on top of it and understand its implications for us moving forward. And I hope that they are able to, at least, the state at least able to honor the spirit of that "Replace," if not its letter. And finally, Marcel Proust once said, "Let us be grateful to people who make us happy, who make our souls blossom." Once again, that was, "Let us be grateful to people who make us happy. They are the charming gardeners who make our souls blossom." And with that, I just use that as an enway to share my gratitude to my family and to all those here, and my colleagues, and the wonderful volunteers and folks throughout this tremendous city for all that they do, all that you do, to help make this a fantastic place. And please have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Don't try to deep fry frozen turkeys. That's no good. Don't do that. And please have a great holiday week, and we look forward to seeing you at the Holiday Lights Parade as on Saturday, December 1st, starting at 5:30 on 12 Mile. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
The Friends of the Library, I just wanted to mention that they had a book sale on October 19th through 21st, and they earned, or they made $3,000 thanks to all of those who shopped there and who donated. A couple of projects that the Friends of the Library are doing is they're going to use some of that money to replace the library's disc resurfacing machine, because they have 7,000 DVDs, over 2,000 CDs, 2,000 books on CDs, all with multiple discs, lots of them, with discs that need to be cleaned. So that's one investment they're going to make. Another investment they're going to make with their funds, not just from this sale, but that they, you know, from other sales and so on, and fundraisers, is to pay the $4,000 annual cost of our subscription for downloadable audio and eBooks, because they are becoming more and more popular. New apps for Nook and Kindle now allow direct downloading, so they have to accommodate that. So, and the other thing that happened in October was Baffling Bill entertained 80 children. Three of them were my grandchildren, with a spooky magic show, and this funding was also provided by Friends of the Library. You should check on some of their things that they offer. I know there's a couple of events coming up in November and December at the library, and I can't remember what they are right now, but check on those. They're great for children and families. That's all, except happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to, again, add my congratulations to Andrew Hadfield, an excellent choice for sergeant. I have worked and trained with Andrew, and he's a good man. I'd also like to say congratulations to all of our public safety officers for all of the great things that they've done over the year in the volunteer effort. Our citizens, we talk about all, I don't think our citizens know anywhere near the amount of volunteer effort that these gentlemen put in and ladies, and it's great. It's something you don't find in a lot of places, and really, really glad to have that level of support from our public safety officers. Also want to mention the Holiday Lights Parade. We'll be out there with the fire trucks, making an awful lot of noise, blowing the horn and running the sirens, so come on out and join us at 5:30. Hopefully, it'll be a nice night, not like a couple of years ago, it was blowing snow. And also, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Enjoy your holiday and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeSessa?
I promise I'll be very brief, Your Honor. I'm not feeling so well right now. I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to all our residents and wishing them and their family a safe and happy holiday, and then also to let everybody know that, please, 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 participate in the Holiday Contest, Holiday Lights Contest, that the beautification committee has come up. This is the first time. We are now trying to bring that committee back up, and if anybody out there is interested in becoming a member, you know, please contact my office or go to our website at www.berkleymich.org, and you can get an application. So with that, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Subouda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two items. Number one, I'm very pleased to and thrilled to tell the Council and the citizens of Berkeley that we have received for the fifth consecutive year our distinguished budget presentation award for the 12-13 fiscal year. We received that today, and I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Everything's been said. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I would like to congratulate Drew. He is an outstanding individual. I've been having the privilege of working with him. Geez, probably eight, nine years now since he became a public safety officer. He was, other than, we had some outstanding candidates, he's going to make an exceptional sergeant. So congratulations, Drew.
Thank you. Well, I have just a couple of comments, just to echo the comments that have been made, of course, with regard to Sergeant Andrew Hadfield. Just an extraordinary young man in an extraordinary public safety department. Our Public Safety Department has an amazing collegial spirit, and you saw that this evening, with virtually half of our department show up for this event. That cohesiveness doesn't just happen. It also reflects the leadership of Chief Eschman and the leadership team that bring about that cohesive spirit within the department, and the hiring patterns. Don't forget, it's the hiring patterns and selection of personnel that leads to this kind of accolade that all of you have identified. The election went remarkably smoothly, thanks to Cheryl Prince and her staff and volunteers. It is a huge undertaking to handle that many people coming through to express their viewpoint with a lengthy ballad into the bargain. So it went remarkably well, and it reflected the planning that went into it so that it could run smoothly. The Finance Department, Mr. Subouda, and your staff, you have heard it all this evening in terms of the awards and the applause from our auditors at Planton Moran, and we are very proud of that as well. Thanksgiving is coming. I wish all our residents a very happy and peaceful Thanksgiving. There is one more issue. It is the December 1st parade. As mayor of the city, it has come to my attention that there is very good reason to believe that Santa Claus will show up for this event. Very confident of that, and I would like to remind all the boys and girls of the city to be on their best behavior for this event, because they will most certainly have an opportunity to spend a moment with Santa Claus himself. And on that very pleasant note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekko.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.